School district, I apologize to the audience for the delay in getting started and we can go ahead and begin with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I am a Pledge of Allegiance student of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the Constitution, and the Constitution of Justice.
Okay, we can go ahead and begin our open meeting. We have, I'd like to acknowledge that we have translation.
We have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight. Vivian?
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. If there is anyone who needs an interpreter, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias. We also have headsets available for the hearing impaired as noted on our screen. We have introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Do we have any of those today?
And we have two. Board, as I noted at our last meeting, the district received an important award last month for the work we've done in the district's website accessibility. To share more about this, I've asked Barbara Kiani and Linda Steele to provide a brief update on our efforts. Barbara and Linda? I don't know that we regularly introduce Linda Steele, but she is our district webmaster.
Good evening, Board. Since January 5th, 2004, Linda Steele has served as the district's webmaster, a part-time position. She is responsible for the day-to-day maintenance and operation of the district's website and assures that the webpages comply with the appropriate policies, guidelines, and standards. Each day, Linda maintains and continues to build a highly effective and user-friendly site. We strive to build the content for Spanish speakers and most recently configure the site to provide accessibility in accordance with Americans with Disabilities Act. As Dr. Sarvis noted at the last board meeting last month, we were the first K through 12 school district honored by the Center for Accessible Technology in Berkeley for the work we have done. And at this point, I'll let Linda fill you in.
Several years ago, Michael Gonzalez, who was our Director of Compliance and Categorical Programs at the time, asked me to make our website accessible. And I said, "Sure, no problem." I didn't really know what that involved, but I did a lot of Googling. Googled website accessibility and did what I could. But it wasn't until about a year ago that I started working with the Center for Accessible Technology up in Berkeley. They reviewed our website for us and sent back a 14-page report with recommendations on, you know, what we were doing great on and what we could do to improve it. So I spent most of December implementing most of those changes. I'm almost done. There's always, you know, it's always an ongoing process. So right now, I'm focusing on making our PDFs more accessible. And that was what our award was specifically for, was PDF accessibility. But they also said that we had good accessibility overall. And what website accessibility means is everything from making sure that the contrast is strong enough so that anybody can read the text easily, that font sizes can be easily enlarged, and also adding special code to pages so that people can skip through navigation if they're using alternative browsers, which should be popping up here soon. If you look at the top of that page, it says "skip to main content," and you don't normally see that, but if you're using a screen reader that reads it out loud, or if you're using your tab key to skip around the page, you can skip the navigation and go straight to the content without having to read the navigation on every single page. So that's just one example. There are a lot of things that most of us wouldn't normally notice that I've done to make it more accessible. Six years ago, our website was only 500 pages and we had 900 PDFs, and now we have over 2,000 pages and almost 9,000 PDFs. Every month, I add about 400 pages of PDFs to our website from the board attachments and the board briefs. Many of these pages are scans, but they aren't accessible because they're not text. I can convert them back to text, but that doesn't always result in the actual proper text showing up. So I've been working with each department to try to get things digitally instead of having to scan them back into the computer. So that's where we are right now. And like I said, it's always an ongoing process, but we've come a long way. So, any questions?
We certainly appreciate your efforts, and I know our community does too. Board members?
I don't have questions. Many congratulations, Mrs. Steele, and thank you so much for this work that you're doing. And I just have to say that as a community, as a district, we demand more and more from our website. And I've, in a hearing going from 900 to 9,000, I just, I know that's a tremendous amount of work and it can't be a lot of fun sometimes. So I'm glad that you got this kind of recognition because what you're doing is incredibly important. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to ask for an explanation. If someone's blind and they go to our website, what do they get?
They can use special technology that will read the website to them, and they can skip around by using that skip content link. And then if they get to another link, it'll tell them it's a link and they can type something into their keyboard that will take them to the page that they want to go to. And they actually demonstrated that up in Berkeley, not on our website, but on another website that won an award. And it's actually, I was amazed at how fast a blind person can actually surf the web if the website is set up properly. And unfortunately, a lot of websites aren't set up so that it's easy, but that's changing as people become aware.
So they see our website orally, and they're able to use translation software to get around the website.
Right. It'll just read it, read it right to them.
Pretty cool.
Very nice.
All right.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Steele and Ms. Kiani. It's nice to have you both recognized. Okay. Dr. Sarvis?
Well, we also have a student report tonight. We have Chris Ciricchio and Caroline Green, both from Dos Pueblos High School. They're going to update us on what's happening on the Dos Pueblos campus here. You had a prom this weekend?
Winter formal, yeah.
Oh, winter formal, excuse me.
Yeah. Still a very fun dance.
We'd like to thank you, thank you, Dr. Sarvis, and members of the board for having us here. My name is Chris Ciricchio. I'm the ASP President of Dos Pueblos.
And I'm Caroline Green, the ASP representative at Dos Pueblos High School. Oh, so I'd like to start off by saying at DP, we're a school that values school activities, student achievement, school events, social awareness, and athletics. I'll be going over those topics in our report. The first thing, what you mentioned, Dr. Sarvis, was winter formal, which was just this past Saturday, and it was at Earl Warren Showgrounds from 8:30 to 11:30. And everyone looked great, so it was a really fun dance over there. And then, an activity that's coming up in March is our Leadership Airband. So what that is, is the leadership class gets together, they put on skits for the whole school and sort of mock the stuff that's going on in the media and, yeah, pop culture. And we're working on that right now. It's gonna be in our Greek during lunch, March 4th. And then Hello Dolly is a musical that's gonna be in April.
On the note of student achievement, signups for the IB and AP testing are happening now, and students are getting ready for the CASI High School Exit Exam in March. The High School Exit Exam for 10th graders is from March 8th through the 9th, and the CASI retakes for 11th and 12th graders will be on February, or was, excuse me, on February 1st and 2nd. The Health Exam is on March 23rd, and the Econ Exam is on March 24th. Our Student of the Month is Izzy Savage. The Global Leadership Connection Conference is on February 24th, and this is a really interesting leadership conference for high school students. I actually took part in it first semester as a senior, and now they're inviting juniors. It's a really interesting, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do some of the things we did to take steps as leaders, learn about social issues such as human trafficking. There was a presentation on that, and it was really interesting. It's great for high school students to go through this. So I'm really, really pleased with the juniors that are gonna be going in. They're gonna select 10 males and 10 females from the junior class at DP to attend the conference. It's about a three-to-four day commitment. Oh, and DP's Local Color Magazine Committee is selecting pieces for the 2011 publication. Last year's local color won first place in the nation for Liberal Arts Magazine.
And then some school events that are going on. On February 14th and 15th, Herb Jones, which is the company that does all the senior announcements and class rings, are gonna be coming over during lunch and presenting at the Greek. And then, the Santa Barbara City College Senior Assembly is gonna be on February 22nd, and our big PAC. And then, on February 23rd, some more senior stuff is going on. We have Senior Parent Night in the cafeteria, and our head counselor at DP, Scott Goontag, is gonna be talking about financial aid and college planning and future planning at that. And then, on Saturday, February 12th, we have Beautify DP. I went to the last one, it was tons of fun, and we just got our hands dirty planting trees, and that's gonna be from 9:00 to 12:00 noon. And then, it's hard for me to believe this, but on Tuesday, March 22nd, is the Mandatory Leadership 2011 and 12th Meeting, and that's at 7:00 AM. So all the students who want to be in leadership next year, the sophomores and juniors have to get up early and make it to the door before 7:00 AM to be in leadership next year.
Could be choosing our replacement soon. Really scary. On a social awareness note, the Disability Awareness Day is on February 16th, and Kyle Colton, a senior at Dos Pueblos, who has cerebral palsy, will be speaking in the Performing Arts Center. And he really is, he's an inspirational kid. I've known him since junior high, and he's excellent, hardworking, just a wonderful young man, and I'm really excited for him to do this. The Black Student Union Leadership Conference is at Santa Barbara City College on February 25th from 12:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Every African-American identified student will be invited to a meeting regarding the conference on Tuesday, February 8th during fourth period. To honor Black History Month, there will be Facts on Black History on DP News, which is our school's news network, which is shown daily. February is Love and Acceptance Month, and to honor the month, Love Week will be from February 14th through the 18th. And we're gonna honor the week by having dating and newlywed games in our school Greek to get the students excited and hopefully not married by then. International Week will be happening in the spring, and we're gonna post flags and celebrate with food in the Greek from different cultures, and this is one of DP's biggest events through the year. It's an hour lunch event. Everybody participates. Hardly anybody goes off campus for lunch. It's really exciting. You get to learn a lot about different cultures, and it's an excellent event.
And the last topic I have for tonight, or we have, is athletics. Winter sports are just coming to an end right now, and we're starting with our spring sports. The CIF qualifiers for the winter sports were girls' water polo, girls' soccer, and boys' soccer. And then, National Women's Day in Sports was yesterday, and I know that a big bus of female athletes from DP went over to lunch yesterday, and I hear it was a ton of fun. And that's all we have.
That's our report. Are there any questions? We'd be happy to answer.
Well, thank you very much for such a thorough report. That was really informative. Do board members have any questions or comments?
No questions, but you can tell Ms. Hammond that you did her proud.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate having you here.
You're welcome.
Okay. And does that conclude your superintendent report, or?
No, I do have a superintendent's report.
Okay.
Yes. Well, I'd like to start right off with the board brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board on successive, on every other Friday called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and informal items on school and district matters. A copy of the last board brief from January 28th is on display in the reception area. In the last board brief, and this is why I'm starting out with this, we included Measure Q and R Bond Oversight Committee applications and bylaws. And we're making a plea to the community to get people to serve on the Citizens Bylaw Committee. We have these things posted on the district's website. We have been advertising the openings on the oversight committees, sharing the opportunity to serve at various meetings. I've gone out to various groups to make speeches on this and solicit applications. And we've contacted individuals whom we feel might be interested in applying. Remember that we're looking for people representing different segments of the community. One segment is people who have participated in a bona fide taxpayers' group. Well, there aren't very many of those around, so of course, we've gone to the Local Taxpayers' Association and we've asked them for their help in finding people who might serve on our Oversight Committee. At this time, five applications have been received for the Secondary District Committee, and two applications have been received for the Elementary Committee. The deadline to return the completed application is Monday, February 14. So that's coming right up, and we're a little concerned about having a full field of applicants. We will be bringing the list of applicants forward for your consideration and appointment at the February 22nd board meeting. And if you'll recall, on the Parcel Tax Oversight Committees, we didn't have all of the representatives from the get-go, and we filled in, well, fairly soon thereafter. So we'll probably end up doing the same thing. But once the Measures Q and R Bond Oversight Committees have been identified, we'll anticipate having openings, because some of these people are actually already serving on the Measures H and I Oversight Committees. But we'll then identify what openings we have on H and I, and we'll be going through the selection process, advertising for those two committees as well. Well, we'd like to remind everyone that open enrollment ends March 1st. So we have the rest of this month for parents to get their new kindergarten students next year signed up for schools and to decide what schools, if they'd like to transfer to a school. I know this is a particularly big issue among eighth-grade parents with kids going off to ninth grade and sixth-grade parents with students going off to junior high. And I'd like to report on the Peabody Charter Schools Open Enrollment Period, which closed this last week at the end of January, and they conducted their lottery today. Mr. Heron was at the lottery, provided some good information. He may want to speak to this. We understand that the only names under consideration were the Boundary Area students, giving priority to siblings in the Boundary Areas. 105 students were accepted for kindergarten with a waiting list of 14. The other grade levels had a waiting list of 21 in the first grade, 10 in the second grade, nine in the third grade, three in fourth grade, four in fifth grade, and one in sixth grade. So that's a total of 62 students who were waitlisted. Also related to open enrollment, I need to tell you about this, and we'll bring a report to the board on it. Board, I have approved another run at the Accelerated Academic Program Pilot at San Marcos High School, redesigned as the Accelerated Academic Program for Leadership and Enrichment, Apple, with an emphasis on what was found to be the most critical part of the program, enrichment. In fact, you'll hear quite a bit about enrichment. The school will again pilot this program with the clear expectation that at least 25% of the students this year will be Latino students, and a program goal of representation that mirrors the school's demographics. Board, I'll have the school's description in Friday's board brief, and we're planning a report to the board at an upcoming meeting. Our school district, the Anti-Defamation League, and the District Attorney's Office are developing plans to hold presentations on cyberbullying in March. The dates and times have not been determined, but the plan is to host the presentations at three different schools. In fact, we'll stage them at the three different high schools on three different nights, and we'll invite then all secondary parents. In fact, we'll advertise throughout the entire district, because even elementary school parents may want to attend. So we'll be holding three different cyberbullying presentations in March. And we are preparing the district's 145th anniversary, which will take place in May, on May 12. We're delighted that our event will be hosted across the street in the Santa Barbara Historical Museum's beautiful courtyard, at no cost to us. One of our 145th events celebrates Black History Month, which is this month, with a Santa Barbara Blues Society performance at Santa Barbara High School, and this performance is open to the public. The Santa Barbara Blues Society will perform at the Santa Barbara High School Library this Thursday, February 10th at 12:15. The performance is part of the Blues for Youth, an outreach program to give children of all ages an appreciation for the blues. Santa Barbara Blues Society is a nonprofit organization dedicated to keeping the African-American blues traditions alive. And again, that event is open to the public. Well, we have another list of Santa Barbara School District's 145th events and performances that is being updated daily. Copies are before you and available at the back of the room. Events are also posted on our website. Just to give you a flavor for some of the upcoming events, at San Marcos High School, Rachel's Challenge, which is a video screening and training session, takes place tomorrow, Wednesday, February 9, at 7:00 PM. So that's in the evening. Rachel's Challenge is based on the life of Rachel Scott, the first person killed at the Columbine High School in April 1999. The community is invited to see a video that the students have viewed, will have viewed earlier in the day, and will challenge the students and the community to examine the way they treat others. Dos Pueblos High School's improv troupe performs February 4th, that's last, yeah, just passed, and March 4th, and April 8th. So you still have plenty of time to go see the improv at Dos Pueblos High School. Dos Pueblos High School also presents the Blackboard Jungle Cruise on February 17 and 18. And Santa Barbara Junior High School's Talent Show is on February 18. There are plenty of other events, and it looks to be a fairly busy spring schedule. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sarvis. It seems like we are on a roll with very thorough reports. So do board members have any comments or correspondence that they would like to share? Mr. Heron?
I will comment on two things. One, one Peabody this morning. It was a very professional hearing. I was very pleased that it focused on inboundry students. My one concern is that there are 62 students who are on waitlist, and my question would be, are they being notified that they have until March 1st to apply at one of our other schools? Because if they don't, and they just think they're gonna wait for the waitlist, when the time comes that they find out they can't be admitted to Adams, then it's too late to apply to any of our other schools, basically. And so I don't know what's in place, but I would hope that something's being done to make sure that, especially the kindergarten parents and the first-grade parents, that they can apply for a transfer to another school up until, you know, March 1st. I don't want to get in a situation like we had last year where, at the end, they find out they've lost that right. So, just a point of interest on that. But it was very, very well done, and I was surprised that there weren't more parents there watching the results. But it was, and Mrs. Fort indicates that she thinks a great number of the people on the waitlist will get admitted. So she was gonna, she said that the 62 will be a dramatically less number, probably. One other thing, and I guess it's under correspondence and it's not one that I particularly want to comment on very much, but I need to make, I guess I was aware of it, rather than, I've been contacted from parents from all three high schools. There were two dances Saturday, and there was a dance a week ago Saturday. And I'll just leave it at this, that there are parents out there circulating petitions that some day probably will come before us, that there's just plain inappropriate behavior going on in the dance floor at all three schools. And it's something I think, I know our principals are working on, but as a result of the last three dances, it wasn't, whatever they're doing, it's not working. Now, maybe it's my generation that thinks differently than other generations. We have every generation represented here, but it's something that I'd rather be upfront on, working on, rather than have a line of parents at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. Other board members?
I did. So since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the Autism Conference, and I was actually really pleased because we had a lot of our district staff there. So I'm thankful to those that were able to attend. I think it was great information. It really covered practice-based and also legal information about how we can do work in our schools. I also had the opportunity to attend the DLEC meeting, and I was asked to share another date with everybody. I believe it's a Wednesday, but May 18th, there's going to be an all ELAC meeting at McKinley Elementary School at 6:30, and they're hoping to bring in a speaker. I think it's going to be a science, technology, engineering, math-based speaker, so we'll see if they can do that. But I'm adding that to the list of events. And I also was at the Engineering Academy at DP last week, and I want to commend all the hard-working students. I left at 9 o'clock at night, and they were going to be there much later than I was, but they were very enthusiastic, working really hard, and they're doing really neat work. So major kudos to them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker?
And the one thing that I will add is that this past Friday, we had our, not quite monthly, but almost monthly, Elementary Parent and Secondary Parent Advisory Committee meetings. And Ms. Limon was able to come to part of that, where we got updates on the parcel taxes and the plea for Q and R from Lynn Rodriguez for the Oversight Committee, so that got passed out there. But also, a great update from Dr. Cynthia White on the Common Core standards, and sort of an initial step, I think, in informing parents about what's going on with that for them to share at their sites. And parents, she let us know that Dr. Kate Consella is coming back during Professional Development Week, the first week after school gets out in June. And parents were really interested in seeing if it was possible to have her present to parents, because there's so much for us as parents to learn about how we could be furthering our children's academic language in the home. So that was great.
Well, I'll just add something kind of fun on top of all of those, and that is that last weekend, I attended two short documentaries that were part of the International Film Festival that featured a number of our district students in the context of the documentary. One of them, I apologize, I have forgotten the name of. It was about students exploring the natural world and their involvement with nature, and the plea for, to parents to allow their children and to provide time for their children to have sort of unstructured playtime in the outdoors. And as part of that, there was a feature of the outdoor camp that is run through the Museum of Natural History, and also some of the ones that come onto our campuses. And so a number of our students, and their bright, beautiful faces, were featured in that one. And then also, Beneath the Rainbow Bridge was one that was a documentary about the marine sanctuary surrounding the Channel Islands, and we had a number of our students, two of whom happened to be nieces of mine, were also featured in that film. So we had just some really wonderful opportunities for our students to be seen on the big screen. So, okay, well, I think that concludes our comments for the board. We have nothing to announce, we had no action to announce from closed session, so that brings us to public comments.
We have two public comments. Kenneth Locke followed by Selena Rockwell.
My name is Kenneth Locke, here once again. I went before the city council, and I brought up the whole concept of soundness of mind and body. And the catch here is that to have a soundness of mind and body, a person has to have the understanding of the connection between the mind and body. And if a person doesn't have a relationship, say, with a discipline where the mind and body are integrated, they have no reference for developing a soundness of mind and body. And it's just kind of funny, I think, in our legal system, I think you have to be of sound mind and body. It just, and what I'm bringing to the table is actually primarily through the arts, but then also through the athletic exercise of tennis. Actually, I'm working on explaining the basis of that integration and making it available for people, and which hasn't been available. And then, to tie a lot of other concepts into this, the whole idea of what truth is. And... And then to tie a lot of other concepts into this, the whole idea of what truth is, and also the idea of, in relation to education, interdisciplinary. So I'm going to work on a page, I think it was kind of the title, The Interdisciplinary Truth. And I think what we have to come to terms with now is the fact that our educational system has ill-prepared people for the, say, the next economy, because it turns out that when you invest your time into, say, one subject, it's, it's not, it's not the right way to go about business, to limit yourself to one discipline, and that's it. It turns out that the truth is, is that you diversify yourself in all disciplines, and you actually can reach the highest level, again, in relation to all disciplines. And then at, at that point, a person actually can reach their own highest potential, but also provide something to the community that has value and substance. But, yeah, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful-
Thirty seconds?
I'm hopeful that the work that I'm doing is recognized. I think it's, it is actually important, and gradually as this economy, we realize that it, it's not really well-thought-out, and we have to evolve. Possibly I'll be brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke.
And Ms. Rockwell, and I apologize, is it Selena?
Selena.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Sarvis and members of the board. I first just want to say thank you for all that you do. I know that you have an important and big role in our schools and our community, so I just really appreciate all that you do. I'm, so my name is Selena Rockwell. I'm the coordinator for the Youth Service Specialist Program through Fighting Back, and I'm here today just to kind of share with you a little bit about my experiences in this role. I've actually been the coordinator, I've actually been with the program for about seven years now. And I started off as a YSS at Santa Barbara High School seven years ago. It's amazing how time flies. But in that role, I really experienced firsthand how important and needed the services are that YSS provide. Just to share with you one experience, to tell you a little more of that story, I did a presentation in an English class presenting our YSS services, and specifically about the Reconnecting Youth class. And generally, you know, doing those presentations, you, you reach out to the whole school community, letting them know, we're here, you know, this is a safe place for students to come if you need something. And I remember that very afternoon, one of the students that was in that class came to my office and said, you know, I need to be in that class, I want to be in your class. And I'm going to get a little emotional here, but the student actually didn't, you know, she did join the class, the Reconnecting Youth class, and she was dealing with a lot of hard stuff, which is really the norm for most of our students that are in our classes. So they've got personal things at home, or stressors at the school. And the student, she didn't actually complete the ROI class, and partly because of those stresses. You know, she was so in need of help, and that's why, you know, she came to my door that day saying, I need you. She did come to my, my office one morning, after being in the program for about three weeks, and at that time, she was in a suicidal state, so she was, you know, she, you know, skipped her, her PE class and was just having suicidal thoughts, was in a lost place. That's one of my, you know, personal, very heartfelt stories, where I say this program really saves kids' lives. I don't know where she would be today without our program. Luckily, I know now, I actually have seen her in the community, and she's an adult and has a child of her own now, so she's doing much better. In any case, so in my role as the coordinator, so just a little, a little touch on being a YSS, but in my role as the coordinator, I get to oversee all the Reconnecting Youth classes-
Thirty seconds.
And I, I regularly do observations of the ROI classes, so I get to see how this program changes kids' lives, you know, so I see them at the beginning of the semester, the end of the semester, and I see them years later. That's one of the coolest things that I get to do. So I just want to say thank you for all that you do to support this program, and just how needed it is. And I also have kind of a summary of our services from the semester. I'll just drop this off to you, and I'll, I'll go ahead and send you an email as well. So if you have any questions, I welcome that after the email. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rockwell. We certainly appreciate the work that YSS is doing in our schools. Okay, I believe that completes public comment, so that brings us to the acceptance of donations. Do I hear a motion?
Move to accept with gratitude.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Do, does anyone have any items to pull from our consent agenda? Ms. Parker?
Not necessarily to pull. I did let Ms. Hall know about a couple of minor corrections to the January 25 minutes. One is on page three of six, changing, where it says Vice President Deacon Heron to Vice President Deacon. And then on page five of six, on E7, in the first paragraph, where it says Eyes, Heron, Parker, Deacon Limone, it should have been Cordero, Parker, Deacon Limone. And she indicated she would go ahead and make those corrections, so I'd like to move that we pass those minutes based on those corrections, unless-
I have one other question about that.
One other correction on that one?
If you look under E4, the sampling plan, if you look under the motion, I made it and seconded it, and there is a corrected motion I'd like to read or, and have incorporated. You see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
And Mimi has this wording. "Motion made by member Parker to approve the revised sampling plan for Panacea Incorporated for indoor air quality testing at Washington Elementary School, with the agreement that the total cost not to exceed $75,000, and to also approve purchase order regarding Panacea Inc. for agenda item D10 and the warrant for agenda item D12. Board member Heron requested to include the approval of hiring Panacea Inc. to perform indoor air quality testing at Washington Elementary School. Seconded by board member Heron, motion passed 5-0."
All right, so I'll, I'll move when the time comes that we make those corrections to the January 25th. I also just want to call out, there, I think that there are a lot of wonderful things, actually, that we can call out in the consent agenda. I wanted to focus on one thing on the, on the personnel item, and that is the retirement of two teachers, Evelyn Ponse and Debbie Katzberg. My own children have had her, one of my students had her, has her right now, and has both of them, I should say, right now. They're wonderful teachers, and sometimes it really breaks my heart to see the retirements come forward, but I guess I can't not deny it, so, but I did want to call that out.
Great, okay, so do we-
I had one other question, just a question on D15, maybe for Mr. Hunt, or Mr. Smith. It's the one for the bond proceeds, and there's about $3 million, and it basically says we have plenty of deferred maintenance programs that we can use that fund for. Will at some point, that list of deferred projects come to us for, us to review?
You will get, part of that is, as you'll see at the next meeting, part of that will, will ask you to reimburse, you, to use those proceeds to reimburse us for projects that were actually expensed out of the general fund or deferred maintenance, which is technically unrestricted right now. And then I believe we have, for the balance, a list that we can provide you, but I think you'll see that we're going to try and shore up the unrestricted general fund, since we do have the flexibility to move eligible projects over into those refunding bond proceeds.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll-
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the consent agenda with the changes to the January 25 minutes.
Okay, we have, okay, made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries unanimously. And we have none to come back to at the end of our agenda. So that moves us to the action agenda. We will begin with item E1, Acceptance of the Santa Barbara School District's Independent Audit Report for the period ending June 30, 2010. Dr. Sarvis?
Deputy Superintendent Eric Smith will introduce this.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Sarvis.
Sorry, I'm so emotional about you introducing something like an audit report.
It just kind of chokes you up, doesn't it? Education Code Section 401020 requires us to have an annual audit performed by independent CPA firm. As Dr. Sarvis alluded to, our audit for fiscal year 9-10 has been completed by Christie White and Associates. James Hawley, who's a representative from Christie White's firm, is here to present the highlights, and I'll call James up. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that introduction. Pleased to be here this evening to present the school district's 2009-10 Independent Audit Report to the board, Superintendent Sarvis and members of the cabinet also here this evening. And as Mr. Smith indicated, I'll hit some of the highlights of the audit report, and then be pleased to answer any questions that you might have related to the audit. The first page of the audit report that I would direct your attention to is actually page one. It's our Independent Auditors Report. It's the first of four letters that we write as independent auditors, and on this one, I'd highlight the third paragraph, which is an unqualified audit opinion, and I'll read just part of it. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the districts as of June 30, 2010." That is an unqualified audit opinion, it is the best opinion that a CPA firm can provide on the district's financial statements, so I wanted to highlight that, first of all. We'll flip all the way back to page 75, and that's the second letter. It's the report on internal control or financial reporting, and also on compliance. And very last paragraph on page 75 highlights six deficiencies in internal control. These, in our viewpoint, are areas for the district to improve upon in its internal control processes and procedures, and I'll elaborate a little bit further on, on those items. The next page, page 76, is our notation on compliance, and we noted no instances of noncompliance that would have a material impact on the financial statement, so that's disclosed on that page. On the following page, page 77, that's our federal letter, essentially, we've tested certain of the district's federal programs in the 2009-10 year, and we have an unqualified opinion on compliance, indicating that we found no instances of reportable noncompliance in federal areas. The next page similarly indicates there were no instances of control deficiencies in internal controls over compliance related to federal programs. On page 79, there's, our final letter is on state compliance, and it enumerates the procedures that we performed relative to state compliance areas as prescribed by the state's audit guide. And findings 2010-7 and 2010-8, two state compliance findings were identified on page 80, and so I'll describe those. We'll turn then to page 82, and this begins our discussion of the internal control findings that I previously made mention of. On page 82, finding 2010-1 has to do with associated student body controls, and there we identified four district school sites where primarily in student body operations, we felt there were opportunities for improvement in internal controls, processes, and procedures pertaining to cash receipts and cash dispersments processing primarily. And the district is aware of this, and will essentially conduct training to mitigate this, and also have sites prepare corrective action plans related to the control deficiencies that are identified. The next finding is on page 84, and that's finding 2010-2, and it has to do with cash receipting in cafeteria, and that one is specific to the Community Day School, which the district has noted has ceased operation. Really no instance of impropriety or misappropriation, but we thought an area where controls could be improved. Page 85, finding 2010-3, has to do with self-insurance processing, and there, the district's fund number 69, dental and vision insurance, essentially has, there's some payments being made relative to those claims, and then there's also payroll activity on the district's general ledger, and what needs to be happening, as we've recognized, and the district also recognizes, there needs to be a reconciliation between the two, timely reconciliation. So we've made that recommendation, and the district is aware of that and is moving in the direction of implementing that recommendation. The finding 2010-4 is on personnel and payroll, and that's essentially a carryover finding from the prior year, where we noted some areas for fine-tuning in various aspects of time reporting, STIRS and PERS reporting, and also employees signing for paychecks, among other matters noted there. And so the district is aware of this, and also moving towards implementing our recommendations related to that particular finding. On page 87, finding 2010-5, cafeteria purchase orders, there during our audit, we noted that the Fiscal Services Director was essentially setting up an open purchase order to make certain routine purchases, and we felt that better internal control might be to establish individual purchase orders for vendors and minimize purchase orders to an individual employee of the district. The district agreed with that, and has indicated in its response that the current reimbursement purchase order has been reduced to $500 annually, so as to improve the internal control in this area. Page 87, finding 2010-6, has to do with credit card authorizations and travel policy, and there we're just noting that there's an opportunity to improve controls related to traveling and employees, essentially indicating all travel that they envision incurring, and putting that on the, on the correct documentation for, for board approval. We, we felt in our inquiries that that may not be happening on a consistent basis, so we, we made that comment. See, finding 2010-7 on page 89, we now move away from internal control over financial reporting into state compliance, and this is a, we noted a, essentially a technical deficiency in the district's instructional materials resolution for the 2009-10 fiscal year, the Instructional Materials Funding Realignment Program. And essentially what we had found in the cause section, page 89, where it says cause, the district did not determine and include in the resolution the percentage of students that lack sufficient textbooks or instructional materials or both. That's a state compliance requirement, where that was absent, we wrote the finding per state compliance requirements, and the district has responded that it made the correction, and the correction was made July 13 of 2010. And then finally, our last finding is on page 90, and it's somewhat lengthy, it covers multiple school sites, but I'd point your attention to page 91, where the ADA impact for what we're talking about on attendance discrepancies was less than one ADA. Under state compliance, where requirements were essentially required to report upon all areas of internal control weakness, and noted discrepancies between source documents of attendance and actual reported attendance, so we've done that, but we'd call your attention that the total ADA impact is less than one. The district's aware of this, and has revised its PT report for the 2009-10 year with respect to the identified discrepancies. And then the very last thing would be on page 93, where we have a summary schedule of prior audit findings, and what that indicates is that the prior audit findings were implemented with the exception of the one related to associated student body controls, which was the first one that I mentioned earlier, and then also the one with respect to payroll, which was a continuing finding in the 2009-10 year. So with that, I conclude my prepared discussion. Be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Can I clarify something? On finding number 2010-5, I, I think you said Fiscal Services Director, and it's actually Food Service Director, I don't want people thinking that Meg's setting up open purchase orders for herself.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions or, well, particularly questions, but comments on this audit report? Ms. Parker?
Well, one thing I see again and again is that tension with ASB accounting, and how difficult it is for our secondary sites to get that right. And I mean, I know that it's because of, sometimes it's because of just weaknesses in the way they're running the program, and other times, it's how they need their money, when they need their money. And I guess one of my questions for you is, is that common, that you see that in other districts as well?
Yeah, absolutely. ASB's kind of an area of kind of a perpetual challenge, however, we believe that the district's aware of that, and we're encouraged by the district's proactive efforts to engage in training programs and essentially hold the sites accountable to, to make improvements, and realize where there are discrepancies and correct those. But we note, particularly in high schools, where there's a lot of money running through the ASBs, that's an area where, given it's decentralized from the district office, from one school district to the next, we will typically find internal control weaknesses. That's not an uncommon thing.
Okay. And I noted that the audit's report on compliance for state programs was- And I noted that the auditor's report on compliance for state programs was qualified. And what exactly pushed it from unqualified to qualified?
Absolutely. It's unqualified because there were two instances of noncompliance noted. If there were none, it would have been an unqualified audit opinion. That is, no exceptions noted. But because there were two exceptions noted, we qualified the report.
Okay. And then my last question is, let me see. On page fifty-eight, on note seventeen, on subsequent events, you talk about measure Q, but you don't talk about measure R, our elementary district bond? And I'm wondering if that was deliberate or just an oversight that it...
Yeah, it may indeed have been an oversight in preparing the financial statements.
Okay. Those are my comments and questions.
Ms. Lamont?
So mine, I actually think are more directed towards the district staff. I am looking at page ninety-three, and for the first item, that's still partially implemented, what elements of that are not yet implemented? So for finding twenty zero nine-one.
I'm going to have Julie Nemus come up and speak to this as our internal auditor, but I think, you know, with respect to the ASBs, we've already provided continuous training, but to say that they're all automatically going to be in compliance would be a big stretch. So I don't know if you have anything else to add to that.
I just wanted to say that we did, um...
I don't think the mic's on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We actually wrote a manual last year and provided training to all the sites, to the ASB advisors, the bookkeepers, the principals. We started, and we're now providing annual routine training to all of the sites. So there has been improvements, and I think the point is that it goes, it's different sites that they look at every year. So they are making improvements, but it's an ongoing process because you're working with new people, you're working with new individual groups, new presidents, and new leadership groups like that are here tonight. And so it's just constant, ongoing training, and we continue to, continue to provide them support, but there's little things that might fall through. If there's one event that there's, the advisor's not able to attend, so a parent fills in, they may not understand all the procedures. So these are the kind of things we deal with on a constant basis, but we are just going out, providing more training. We have another training coming up in the next couple of months, and then we go out, we have been doing some follow-up audits as well.
Can I have someone do guesswork? When do we think we might have it under control? A year?
You know, that's very difficult to tell, to tell you the truth. I've been a CBO in five different districts, and to get a clean audit, unqualified and no findings with ASB, the only time I've ever had that happen is at county office. And you know why that is? Because they have no ASBs. So one of the difficulties, we talked about this earlier, Meg and Julie and I, you know, it's analogous to whack-a-mole, because you have changes in leadership and what they know. So as soon as you have one place under control and you stomp it, you know, it pops up in another site. So, you know, we're going to do our best to eradicate the moles, but I can't guarantee it.
And maybe for members of the viewing public, we should just articulate that ASB is associated student body, so it's all the student leadership groups that are on our secondary sites.
And I'm not characterizing them as moles, just the problem is a mole.
And we do have, we do have adult advisors. We do have people who do the bookkeeping for the ASB account, and I think this year's findings are particularly illustrative of that, that two of the schools didn't have an approved student body budget for the student body. Well, that didn't happen the previous year. The training went well, but it didn't get picked up at two of our high schools this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a question for this or not. We have a document on our website called the Planning Guidelines for Co-Curricular Activities. And I asked this a while back, but one of them in this document, a question, it talks about Government Accounting and Standards Board Statement Number Thirty-Nine, "School Districts in California are now required to include the financial reports of foundations, booster clubs, PTAs, and other school-attached parent-community groups as part of the school district's audit reports." Can you amplify on that, and have we done that?
Yeah, I believe what we're referring to there is component unit reporting, and so if the management identifies an entity such as an educational foundation, sometimes a bond, joint powers, financing authority, there are other aspects that commonly arise, they meet certain criteria, they would be included in the district's financial reporting entity as a blended component unit. And where that's not presented in the audit report, management and the auditor have essentially agreed that there are no component units that meet that criteria for either blended or discrete presentation.
So even though it talks about booster clubs, PTAs, financial foundations, parent-community groups, I mean, in your determination, we have none of those that qualify, even though we have tons of them?
They have to meet a certain requirement with respect to financial status relative to the district, board control over the entity. There are a number of factors that, under the accounting standard, that need to be met. Typically, that, it becomes more of a common thing with city governments and county governments and school districts, but we do see educational foundations, as I mentioned previously, joint powers authorities, things like that arise and meet those criteria.
Then I guess I must, my comment would be, for us novices in the group, maybe this should be better explained, because if you just read this, it sounds like if there's a PTA, we should have a report in our audit. And it also indicates that our auditors are very vavernect, trineday and company. I think that's probably not true. So I think that should be changed also. But I'd like to see this wording change, because me reading it, it sounds like we should have far more reports from the groups that do business with the school district.
Are you referring to the curriculum guidelines where it says, okay, yeah, that hasn't been, okay, I know, now I know why that's updated. I'm just going, where is that in the agenda? Has that been spooked there for a minute?
No, I'm just, to me...
Actually, we are updating that, and thank you for catching that.
Yeah, it just talks about an audit, and you're the auditor, and I don't see that, and yet I guess it doesn't mean what it says.
What I'm thinking is maybe our auditor should give us some clarifying language that we can insert into that document.
Okay, that would be great. With no other questions, I just wanted to ask you, in terms of, because I had some of the same questions that already came up, and you've already addressed them, but in reading through the findings, some of, most of them seem relatively minor. I mean, no findings are ever really minor, but there didn't seem to be too many really glaring, huge things. In your professional assessment, do you feel that there were any things that we should be particularly concerned about?
Yeah. Let me just leaf, leaf back through. I mean, ASBs, as we've discussed already in this meeting, they tend to be recurring findings. Nonetheless, we're encouraged by the district's kind of attention to that particular area. The personnel and payroll and self-insurance areas, again, the district's aware of that and is making strides towards addressing those areas. Those would be the two within internal control that I think I would place the most highlight on.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, because I think those are...
I have one more. That just reminded me, and I forget which school, but there was a principal that was changing attendance records, and that was separated out, and the principal shouldn't be doing that. Pardon?
Was it LaCuesta?
I'm not sure. Maybe it was LaCuesta, but, I mean, do principals, are they supposed to have access to changing attendance?
I'm going to let Julie speak to this, because I think several of us have been involved in this issue, but I think we have a resolution.
Yeah, this was at LaCuesta, and there was a concern that a principal might have been putting pressure on the attendance clerk to change the attendance. It turns out, after a lot of work with human resources, Eric and I were in there, and that's not what was going on. It was a misunderstanding on what is, what qualifies as attendance, ADA. And we met with the principal, we met with the attendance technician on several occasions, and explained proper attendance techniques. We did change access to the Ares attendance system, so the principal can no longer go in and make any changes to the attendance records. It has to go through the attendance clerk.
Is that just one school or all high schools?
It's, it's, the principals, none of the principals have access to change attendance records. LaCuesta, due to its size and smaller admin staff, it had been arranged that way just because there weren't enough people to do it. We have changed it though now, and we've been able to get one of the counselors to take on that responsibility, so that the principal doesn't have access to change the attendance records. And I think, like I said, I think it was more of a misunderstanding as opposed to pressure, and I think there's just, we gave them some clarification on what you can put in as being absent or being in attendance.
And that lesson will be passed on to all principals and assistant principals?
Yeah, principals, there are no principals that have access. There are some sites that assistant principal does, but then the principal has oversight on the assistant principal. So there's always levels of oversight. LaCuesta was just in its own situation because of the low admin staff.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that concludes our, our questions.
I'll go ahead and move that we accept the Santa Barbara School District's independent audit report for the period ended June thirtieth, two thousand and ten.
I will go ahead and second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five, four, sorry, four, zero. And thank you very much.
And I just want to thank both Meg and Julie and their staff, because they put in a lot of work this year, and I think our audit reflects that. So, thanks, you guys.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Well, that moves us on to item E-two. I just want to point out that we're a little behind, and instead of catching up, we're getting a little further behind. So let's review item E-two. Dr. Sarvisk, do you want to introduce this item? The reconsideration?
Last week at a special board meeting, we had presentations by four superintendent search firms. At the end of the meeting, the top pick was Ray and Associates. We were notified by Ray and Associates to, the second morning after, that they were withdrawing. We have subsequently and recently been notified by Leadership Associates that they have withdrawn as well. They told us that they've taken other work with, and, you know, actually, during the presentations, we heard this is going to be a very busy year in California, that there are a lot of superintendents retiring. One of the boards asked to have this put back on the agenda for tonight, and we're, the board president is asking you then to reconsider the designation of a superintendent search firm. The two that are still in the running at this point are Dave Long and Associates and Hazard Young at TIA and Associates, and the other two are out, Leadership Associates and Ray and Associates.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to reconsider? Or because they're gone, we...
I...
We should, we should change the previous, the previous decision, yes.
I'll make a motion that we reconsider the appointment of Ray and Associates.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, motion to reconsider. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four, zero. We are now reconsidering our appointment of, or our decision to, to offer the position, or the contract to Ray and Associates. I forward, we had had some discussion about Hazard Young and TIA. I forwarded Hazard Young, TIA, and Associates. I forwarded some additional information that I was able to gather, and I wanted to make a clarification, because I had raised the concern that since they were not being asked back to Oxnard, that that had raised some concerns for me. And I was able to find out from the board president there that, in fact, that decision has not yet been made, and they, they may, in fact, be asked back. However, I, in the information that I sent out, he pointed out that while his assessment of their work was quite favorable, that he was in the minority. The other four board members at the time did place some blame on them for the problems that arose with their eventual hire, after the hire, after that hire was made. The board president seemed to feel that that was perhaps a little bit unfair, and also pointed out that none of, no concerns regarding their performance had been raised prior to encountering issues with the superintendent they chose. But with that said, I did think it was worth keeping in mind that his was definitely the minority view. So that gives a little bit more information about them. Ms. Parker?
And one thing that I brought up at the last meeting was that I had had experiences with both Leadership Associates and with Dave Long and Associates in terms of being a reference and how references were handled. And what I, upon further reflection, realized is that with Dave Long and Associates, I know that they are very open to board direction, and if we simply explained to them how we wanted the references handled, that I have absolute confidence that they would do it in the manner that we requested. And so I actually, that was a concern before, but that is not a concern for me now.
Mr. Herron?
I'll make the comment that I did watch the entire process once again last Saturday night, right up until the TV went off, and we didn't make a conclusion. But I knew the conclusion. I knew what it was. And my feelings are still the same. If it's down to these two, I would go with HYA.
Ms. Gordero, may I also point out...
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Dr. Sarvisk?
We have with us legal counsel Craig Price, who's, and his firm has taken a look at these firms through Google searches as well. And if there's any questions you may have of him, he's available tonight.
Well, I, I would certainly like to ask him a question, and just a very general question. In your review of these two firms, did you find anything regarding either of them that would raise concerns for us?
In addition to doing a Google search, I had staff in my office go through using Westlaw and did a public documents search that can usually get at many different things, lawsuits, bankruptcies, tax liens, all that kind of thing. And there was nothing disclosed with respect to either of these firms that I would want to point out as a concern. So basically, the answer is nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Okay, shall we hear from our public comment then?
We do have one public comment on this. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, speaking as an individual. I'd like to thank you for having a board meeting on my birthday, so I'm spending my sixtieth with you, so thank you very much.
We'll sing later.
That's right. We will celebrate duly. I would like to remind you that, having spent thirty-plus years in the business and a number of years recently studying both contract and application of California education codes, it seems to me imperative that we find a firm that is completely immersed and surrounded by a understanding of California ed code and the hiring practices in California and the needs and wants. California, for better or for worse, sets the standard in hiring and practices in education. Oftentimes, firms from the other, other parts of the U.S. have a localized sense of what they're looking for and have a sense of what they need to fit those areas. But we really do lead in California when it comes to improvising the educational guidelines and creating the standards for what we do in education. And I really think it's necessary for the board to consider that as an aspect when you're looking at one of these firms. I heard the presentations last time. While they, companies who are located outside of California certainly have a local contact, I think we found that they did their homework and cultured their presentation to provide a picture of what you all wanted to see, and I'm not sure that's really what we want. We really do want somebody who's familiar, understands, has placed, and really is on top of the game in California. We're looking for the best person to fill this job, and we really need someone who's familiar with the landscape and understands the needs of our district. I'm not going to propose a particular agent, you're going to do that, but I do want you to consider that as you look forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, and happy birthday. We're honored that you're spending it with us. We're honored that you're spending it with us. Okay. Other board comments? Questions? Any discussion on these?
Well, I will just note that HYA, the Hazard Young, Atia and Associates, if I'm pronouncing Atia correctly-
Atia.
Sorry, Atia.
Actually, I thought it was Ataya, but when they spoke, they said we're-
Atia.
Hazard Young, Atia.
Hazard Young, Atia has done a lot of searches in California, but obviously not as many as Dave Long and Associates.
So, was that, are you leaning towards Dave Long? Or you're just commenting?
I'm, I am simply commenting. I think we would likely get good service from both of them.
Okay. Ms. Lamont, did you have?
I did. The other thing that I would like to note is that with HYA, one of my concerns still stands that we only saw part of the team and not the full team, so I'm not sure I have all the information. But I do want to note that both associates that would be the core team are California-based. So, I'll note that. And I think it was with Dave and Associates, it would be the third-party associate would be the bilingual one, and we wouldn't have one as part of the core, if I recall correctly. So, just throwing it out there.
One of my concerns was-
Oh, Mr. Heron?
One of our concerns, or my concerns, was Dr. Carolyn McKennan. And I did talk to somebody at one of the school districts where she did the study. And the person who's a 40-year friend of my brother's was just very highly complimentary of her, which changed my attitude a tiny bit.
So does anyone want to make a motion?
I will move that we hire Hazard Young, Atia and Associates to be our search firm for a new superintendent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have any additional discussion on this item?
I'm just gonna note that the years of service in California for one of our associates is 31 years of service in California schools as, in different, from teacher to superintendent roles. And the other associate has about 23 years of service in California.
Okay. All right. Then I will call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Abstentions? Motion carries four, zero. Okay, we have a new selection and we hope that we can get started on this as soon as possible.
We will notify them right away.
Thank you very much.
Can you leave any comments? If anybody has information about them, we don't know. Can you please tell us now?
Then that moves us to item E3. The approval of the naming of Dos Pueblos High School's Performing Arts Building as the Ealing's Performing Arts Center. Dr. Sarvuski?
We're fortunate to have Virgil Ealing step forward once again with a naming opportunity for the Dos Pueblos Theater. We've, you know, the construction of the Dos Pueblos Performing Arts Building is fairly recent, but there were some things we had to scale back. One of those things was a canopy to keep the rain off people as they went in the doors, as they stood at the box office window. It's not a terribly expensive item, but we didn't have the $160,000 to take care of that. We have some other things that we would like to do in the building. For instance, we'd like to convert the performing arts room from a concrete floor to a dance floor with mirrors. And there's just a long list of things that are noted here. Mr. E, Dr. Ealing's, excuse me, was, was very gracious in, in meeting with us. And we're asking that you approve the naming of the Dos Pueblos High School Performing Arts Building as the Ealing's Performing Arts Center in recognition of that pledge.
Is there any discussion on this item?
When somebody makes a pledge like that, is there a time element involved in the pledge? As far as when it's collected, or?
It's, it'll be fairly soon. We've talked about how he would transfer the funds already. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then?
Well, I would like to move that we approve the naming of the Dos Pueblos High School Performing Arts Building as the Ealing's Performing Arts Center. And I also just, we have, we have so many members of our community who support public education, but Dr. Ealing's, he just amazes me. He is so supportive of our students. And I appreciate, he tends to have a Galita focus, and I think that that's wonderful too, because I think that people sometimes forget that we are a school board that is responsible for the secondary district schools, the Galita Valley Junior High and Dos Pueblos High School. And I love whenever we have the opportunity to highlight that. So, I know that we're all gonna want to give special thanks to Dr. Ealing's on this.
And I would like to second that.
Ms. Lamont?
I think that it's, we're very lucky and blessed to live in this community with the support that we have. And I was at DP last week and a parent was first to say, "By the way, we're going to finally get a canopy here." And so I was pretty excited to hear that and a huge thank you.
Okay. And I just want to echo those sentiments. I mean, Dr. Virgil Ealing's has been so generous to our district, it would be hard to overstate the significance of his generosity to our students and how much they are benefiting from that and from the Ealing's family in general. So, we just, many, many, many thanks. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have the motion and the seconded. I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries four, zero. Okay. Then that brings us to item E4, approval of return of two administrative furlough days for 2010, 2011. Dr. Sarvuski, will you introduce this?
Yes, this is one of the budget cuts. Made this last year. Administrators were asked to take two furlough days. Our certificated employees did not take furlough days. And we're asking that the furlough days be returned to the administrators. We believe that they will work those days anyway. And, well, we're simply asking that you return the two administrative furlough days for this school year 2010, 11. The administrative cut is an ongoing cut. This does not change the cut in subsequent years, but it would be returning the two furlough days for this year, for the current year.
Yes, I think that's worth making very, very clear, that that was an ongoing cut. It will continue to be in, in practice, but we will return those, or this, this motion, if we, if we were to do it, would return those two days only for this year. So, board members, or, Mr. Smith, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I couldn't have said it better.
Okay. I, I doubt that actually, but, board members?
Can you explain where the money's coming from?
In the state budget act, there is about $200 million. This is the 10-11 state budget act. Yeah, 10-11. I'm getting my fiscal years confused. There was an amount of money that was appropriated to reimburse partially districts for the backlog of mandated cost reimbursements. And so, even though it doesn't fully reimburse them, it takes a bite out of it. So that'll be about $31 per student or per ADA. And it's a one-time funding source, it's a one-time expense, and that's where the money would come from.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Lamont, did you have a question? No? Our comment? Ms. Parker?
Well, that was my question too, so thank you. I do want to say that this district has a long history of treating its employee groups equally. It's tended to be sort of me-too in terms of the way our employees receive compensation. It bothered me quite a bit that our administrators were hit with furlough days when the rest of our, our certificated staff were not. It bothered me that classified got hit with furlough days. And I feel like we, we sort of set up this, this action that's now in motion and I, just because of the budget situation, I don't see how we can fix that or go back to the way it used to be. And I, I want to note that not only is it, that these furlough days will continue, I expect to see very bad news when we meet at the, at our next meeting about where $10 million in cuts will be coming from. However, in trying to return at least this year to a little bit more balance, I do support this return of two administrative furlough days, just for this year, 10-11.
And I'll just follow up on that. I, I agree that it's very likely that our, our news is going to be somewhat dire at our next meeting. We'll be looking at cuts. I think it's important for the public to understand that the monies that we're using to, or that we're proposing to use to return the two furlough days are one-time funds, which really, I, I believe, and I know Mr. Smith does too, are really only appropriate to be used for one-time expenditures. It's, I always, I believe, bad practice to try to use one-time funds for anything that's going to be an ongoing cost. So this would restore the furlough days for only this year, would be a one-time expenditure for one-time monies. And so in that, for that reason, I feel that it's very appropriate. And also, as Ms. Parker pointed out, that we have had a, a tradition in our district of trying to treat all employee groups reasonably similarly. And so that brings us back into slightly more equitable alignment. And given that we can do it for this year, I, I think it would be an appropriate gesture, especially since next year looks pretty dire. So, I, I would also support it for that reason. Mr. Heron?
I'll just say, I gave my philosophical arguments last week at the last meeting, and I feel the same way on this, even though it's quote, "only 70,000," it's, I just philosophically can't see doing it.
Do we have a motion?
I will move that we approve the return of two administrative furlough days for 2010-11.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye. No.
Okay. And so the motion carries three to one. Okay. Then that brings us to item E5, approval of board action on student discipline case numbers 10/11-19, 10/11-20, and 10/11-23.
And, Mrs. Cordero, we do have public comment on case 10/11-20. Julie Sanregret, followed by Michael De Niro.
If you would like to come to the podium?
Yes, hi. I'd like to first hear you tell-
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Price.
Is this on? The light keeps going off. Okay. I just want the record to be clear that counsel, Mr. De Niro, appeared and spoke in open session before the closed session. That I understand, although I was not present, that your board deliberated in this expulsion hearing during closed session, that the purpose of you coming out here is to report your decision at this time. And further, that counsel had been advised that it would be heard in closed session and had an opportunity to attend, but apparently elected not to. And I'm sure that counsel knows that ordinarily, these matters are heard in closed session. And I just don't want there to be a mistake made by anyone with respect to bringing it into the public eye. So with that preface, please go ahead.
Okay. I, I just want to clarify, Mr. Price, that we actually advised counsel that we would not be taking additional, that because it was not a supplemental hearing in closed session, that we would not be taking additional input at that time. And we advised counsel and parent, if they wish to speak to this item again, to, that it would be appropriate to do so now.
Then I stand corrected. I just wanted to make sure there was no mistake made.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd like to add one comment, is we don't make decisions in closed session.
Yes.
That's why it's on the agenda now, is for a decision. So, there has been no decision. There isn't-
Correct. Correct.
Maybe one of us might have a different understanding at the moment.
And we advised the two speakers of that prior to adjouring into closed session, that we would make our decision out in public session. I, I do want to remind, just before you speak, that normally, we try to keep the anonymity and confidentiality of, of the students, and in this case, the parent is electing to speak in public, so.
Thank you. I've handed out to you the decision of the hearing panel that I received in the mail last week. My son's expulsion hearing was held on January 27th, and the district recommended his full expulsion. My attorney identified several serious due process errors committed by the district before, during, and after the expulsion, after the expulsion hearing. Starting on January 28th, and again on February 1st, I sent emails to Mr. Sumter requesting the taped transcript of the hearing. Yesterday at 3:00 PM, we were notified that the taped recording of the hearing had malfunctioned, and thus the district would recommend that the, my son's expulsion hearing be reconducted at a supplementary hearing. This was yesterday, February 7th. Please note that in the letter, on the letter before you, on page one, the first page, it shows that I would have been required to submit in writing by February 4th if I had wanted to request a supplemental hearing. I don't think they should get a do-over. The district should know that expulsion hearings are grave matters, seriously impacting the lives of students and their families. These hearings need to be conducted properly and legally the first time. The last four pages of the handout I gave you is a detailed panel report, including direct quotes. Ask yourself how the hearing panel could have produced this report, given that I was there and observed the panel taking no notes. My son has been out of school for two months already. It's not our fault that the district was unable to facilitate a legal and timely hearing. The district should address the due process errors inherent to the current procedures on their own time, not at the expense of my son's education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. De Niro?
Hey. I told you, the first thing I learned in law school, I'm gonna tell you the most important thing. The definition of justice is getting the process you're due. And the district's policy as implemented during the expulsion hearing, not only my client, but I represented another client, it's my understanding, every expulsion hearing is rife with due process violations. So I ask you, even if you decide, whatever you decide about my client, you need to revisit the policy. And there are two horrible violations of due process. The attorney that presents the district's case is allowed ex parte communication with Mr. Sumter, who serves as the judge during the hearing. There is no system of American adjudication that allows one party to communicate with the judge and the other not. Ms., the attorney for the district, representing, presenting the district's case, sent me a letter, and if I spoke or communicated with Mr. Sumter, I would have been in violation of the rules of professional conduct of the state bar, and I could have been disciplined. She routinely spoke to him, and she said to me in all seriousness, "Well, tell me what your problems are and I'll talk to him about it." Okay? The second, and absolutely horrible violation, is under Education Code 48915B, for you to expel based on a report from the panel, you must find- to expel based on a report from the panel, you must find that one or both of the following was based on findings. Findings have to be based on evidence, okay? Other means of correction are not feasible, or due to the nature of the active presence of this pupil causes a continuing danger. At the end of the hearing, during which no evidence that went to those two matters was presented, Mr. Sumter asked the attorney for the district to certify that those two conditions were met. I objected vehemently. I pointed out that she was not a sworn witness, she cannot produce testimony. Yet, my objections were overruled, and those findings found their way into the report from the administrative panel based on no evidence. A finding must be based on evidence, and you must, and I, and I'm willing to come in and provide you as much documentation as necessary, you must revisit the process. My client asked me, "What about the students that can't afford representation?" I guarantee you that every one of them was steamrolled by the due process violations, which are built into the process...
30 seconds?
Thank you. Built into the process that you have in place. And let me be clear on this. I'm not claiming any misconduct by Mr. Sumter or by the attorney that represented the district. The due process violations occurred because they followed your rules, and you should stop it. It's just terribly wrong. It's horrible, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Niro. Okay. Board members?
In case number 10/11-19, I move that we uphold the findings and recommendations of the administrative hearing panel for a suspended expulsion contingent upon parent agreement, that they do, that they do not want a supplemental hearing, there would be a rehearing with the administrative hearing panel.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
In case 10/11-20, I move to hold a supplemental hearing that is a rehearing with the administrative hearing panel.
I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can you explain exactly what that means?
That would mean that in this case, the supplemental hearing that's being ordered by the board would be with the administrative hearing panel and a rehearing of the original case.
So, not with us?
Not with the school, with the board.
And we have a second on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
In case 10/11-23, I move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a suspended expulsion contingent upon parent agreement, that they do not want a supplemental hearing, there would be a rehearing with the administrative hearing panel.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, thank you very much. With that, we have reached our point in the agenda where we are taking a short break. We are scheduled for a 15-minute break, and we are miraculously back on time. So, we will take our break, and we will reconvene in 15 minutes.